Behind me and in front of me, the restrooms are located across the lobby. We're going to begin the meeting with an election for a moderator for a term beginning July 1st of 2007 through June 30th of 2009. I have had one person declare for that position. Her name is Florence E. Siple. Do I have any other nominations? Then the clerk is going to cast one vote for Florence E. Siple, our town moderator, for the next two years. Yes. That's on here. Okay. Moderator, you're going to call and do the pledge of allegiance. He does it. One, follow him.
(inaudible).
At this point, I'm going to introduce our moderator for this evening, James Donnelly.
We're now going to call the meeting to order. Once again, I'd like to affirm the quorum. Can the tellers tell me how many people were in the audience? Tell us. Okay. Thank you. This time, if everyone would rise for the Star Spangled Banner. Excuse me. It's the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all. I'd like to reintroduce the town clerk, Nancy Mello.
I'm going to read the warrant for tonight's meeting pursuant to Chapter 3, Title 45 of the General Laws of the State of Rhode Island. You're hereby required to post at least seven days before the 16th of May, 2007, written notification in three or more public places in the said town of Tiverton, Rhode Island, notifying and warning the electors of the said town of Tiverton qualified to vote upon any proposition to impose a tax or for the expenditure of money to assemble in-town meeting at the Tiverton Junior Senior High School, 100 North Brayton Road, Tiverton, Wednesday, May 16, 2007, at 7:00 PM, for the purpose of ordering a tax to be levied and assessed on the ratable property of said town and the inhabitants thereof, for the payment of the town's debts and interest, for the payment of the town's proportion of the state tax, for the support of schools, and for the support and maintenance of the poor for building, repairing, and amending highways, for property belonging to the town, for all necessary charges and expenses whatsoever arising within said town, whether incidental or not to the above; for taking action as may be expedient in relation to authorizing the town treasurer to release to the parties legally entitled to redeem the same land conveyed by the collector of taxes to the town when the time for redemption has not expired, and also to vote and act on the matters and propositions below listed. At this time, the town moderator will continue with the procedural rules. The tellers have been called for and sworn in.
Good evening, everyone. First thing we're going to do is go to turn to Page A. We're going to vote on the procedural rules for this meeting. The first one is resolved that the town administrator, any town department head, including school superintendent, and the director of library services may participate in these proceedings but may not vote in these proceedings if that person is not a registered elector of the town of Tiverton.
So moved, Mr. Moderator.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number two, resolved that in order to conduct an orderly flow of business, the moderator will recognize the chairman of the Budget Committee or his designee to place the Budget Committee's recommendation before the electors. Following the Budget Committee's recommendation, the moderator shall recognize an amendment from the applicable department/committee, if any, and no more than three amendments from the floor. All motions must be seconded. Discussion shall be allowed in the reverse order in which the motions were presented and by any maker of any amendment prior to any votes taken. In making a motion, the elector shall, one, proceed to the nearest microphone; two, state his/her name and address; and three, state the motion which contains a specific dollar amount. If all motions fail to be adopted, new motions may be entertained and voted on as presented.
So moved.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Three, resolved that no motion that alters, amends, rescinds, or reconsiders any previous action shall be entertained by the moderator unless there are as many or more electors present as there were at the time the original vote was taken, and the person moving said motion shall have been recorded as voting on the prevailing side.
So moved.
Any discussion? Not all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Four, resolved that the town meeting shall receive the written reports of the town officers and committees.
So moved.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Five, resolved that no motion to approve the remainder of the budget as recommended or requested shall be approved unless said motion is adopted by majority of the assembly.
So moved.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Six, resolved that the order of the agenda shall be maintained.
So moved.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motions carried. At this time, we will formally receive the reports from the town officials, and those were on the reports are in writing and they were presented in the lobby before the meeting. At this time, I would like to recognize Glenn Steckman, the town administrator.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be very brief. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the town department heads and the town staff for their hard work this past year, and I also want to recognize the over 150 volunteers who serve on the 28 boards, commissions, and subcommittees for the town of Tiverton. Everybody works together to make life a little bit better here in Tiverton, and I want to publicly thank them, and I know the council also extends their deep appreciation. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.[506.81][506.81](applause).
Thank you, Glenn. At this time, we're going to proceed to Page B, which is the Budget Committee Resolutions. Number one, resolved that the town treasurer is hereby authorized and empowered to release to the parties legally entitled to redeem the same real estate conveyed to the town by the collector of taxes upon payment to the town of taxes, penalties, and expenses thereto, and to sell other parcels on which the period of redemption has expired.
So moved.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Number two, resolved that the town treasurer is hereby authorized and empowered to borrow, if necessary, in the name and on the credit of the town such sums of money as may be required for fiscal year 2007-2008 for transacting the obligations incurred by appropriations made at this financial town meeting, such such sums of money not to exceed in the aggregate the sum of $500,000.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motions carried. Three, resolved that all nonrecurring accounts be restricted for their intended purpose and that no transfers are authorized out of these accounts.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Carried. Number four, resolved that once the electors of this financial town meeting appropriate the sum of $168,304 for the landfill closure restricted account under the Department of Public Works budget, said funds shall be placed in a reserve fund pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 4511-1 and are to be used solely for the purpose of landfill closure.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Resolves carried. Resolved that all funds received from the federal or state government for the purpose of reimbursing the town for any expenditure authorized by appropriations made as a result of this financial town meeting shall be deposited into the town's general fund as surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Resolves carried. Resolved that any supplemental funds received above that which is anticipated per this budget document from the federal, state, or local government for the purpose of any school department, past, present, or future operational expenditure, shall result in an equal amount of appropriated funds being returned to the town's general fund as surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Resolves carried. Resolved that the electors of this, at this financial town meeting hereby authorize the taking from the general fund surplus balance as of June 30, 2006, the sum of $900,000 to be used to offset the tax rate. This amount shall not exceed the amount noted on the revenue projection page of this budget docket, and that shall remain in the general fund reserve, an amount to cover 3% of all expenditures approved at this financial town meeting in accordance with the provisions outlined in the town charter.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Martin.
I'd like to enter a resolve. And that the electors of this financial town meeting hereby protect the integrity of all salary accounts by prohibiting the transfer of funds between operating accounts and any salary account.
Could you provide that to me in writing? But I didn't, I wasn't able to get all that, Mr. Martin. I want to make sure I get it right. Okay, resolution has been made. Is there a second? Okay, the resolve, I'll read it. Resolved that the electors of this financial meeting hereby protect the integrity of all salary accounts by prohibiting the transfer of funds between operating accounts and salary accounts. Is there any, Mr. Martin, would you like to discuss this mo, a resolve?
It's a resolve that's been on previous dockets. The only difference between this one and the previous dockets is that you can still transfer between departments.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Bowlen.
We changed the resolve, I believe it was three years ago, about transferring money from salary accounts and operating accounts because of the restrictions that were placed on the budget. The numbers get tighter and tighter, and there are times that transfers have to be made, and this body in the past has given the council the permission to make those changes over the last two years because of those budget constraints. I think the councils have done a very good job in respecting the wishes and making the money that was appropriated by this body, you know, fit what we needed it to fit, and I would appreciate if you would continue to give us your support so that we can continue to run this town efficiently and effectively.
Mr. Martin?
You want me to go, Bob?
Okay.
Bob, I understand too why you're proposing this, and I appreciate it, but I do think that a council does need that flexibility. If we have a vacancy in a salary account, and that vacancy generates funds, and we have an emergency in an operating account, then I would hope that we could be able to use that. And I appreciate where you're coming from, dear Robert, but I do think we need, we need to have that flexibility as Mr. Bowlen suggested. And I would like to just point out one more thing. You will know that our last Monday meeting, I believe, of Mr. Carroll had on the agenda that any consolidation of positions of any type would have to receive the approval of the council. So, I mean, we didn't adopt that, but we adopted an agreement that we'd go ahead with a policy for that. So, I understand where you are.
If I may, I don't quite agree with that because if it were an emergency and the funds were being used for emergencies, you would not see me here. However, there have been people who have not been hired, departments have been going with limited personnel, and those funds have been used in other areas. Those funds were used, some have been used, I was told that some were going to be used to pay Blue Cross Blue Shield, others were going to be paid for the electric account, and I can go on and on. We've bought items that were not of emergency nature. I have the documentation to prove that. So I don't think that that involves a lot of water. If it were emergencies, again, I repeat myself, I would not be here. This is not the case. I don't think we should be taking off the working people and limiting people in the offices and closing offices and to use the money in areas that are not emergencies.
Is there any further discussion? If not, we're going to vote on Mr. Martin's resolve that says that the electors of this financial town meeting hereby protect the integrity of all salary accounts by prohibiting the transfer of funds between operating accounts and salary accounts.
Mr. Moderator, could I request a hand vote?
Let's try and do it first by a voice vote. All those in favor of Mr. Martin's resolve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I believe, Mr. Martin, that the noes have it, and that... Okay, we'll have a hand vote then. Will the tellers come forward, please? Would you kindly keep your hands raised because there will be a second count that will go by after the first one? So kindly keep your hands raised till you counted twice. Okay. Could you give us a count of how many people in the room, please? 320. 320. Okay, ready? Okay. All those opposed, kindly raise your hand.
(inaudible).
Could you give us a count of how many people in the room, please? 320. 320. All those opposed, kindly raise your hand.
(inaudible).
We're now going to turn to Page B1. The top it says, "Motion to approve excess levy due to debt service. Whereas the town of Tiverton forecasts debt service expenditures which exceed last year's debt service expenditures by more than 5.25% due to bond indebtedness incurred pursuant to state law and public referenda, and whereas such debt service expenditures justify exceeding the levy cap set forth in Rhode Island General Laws 4452 as more specifically set forth in 4452D3, and whereas Rhode Island General Laws 4452E requires that, quote, "The majority of the electors present in voting at the town financial meeting shall also approve the excess levy," end quote. Now therefore, it is resolved that the excess levy due to debt service is hereby approved.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll entertain, we'll go forward with the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. We'll proceed to the next page. We're only going to read a portion of this. The top of the page says, "The total amount of expenditures recommended is..." If we go all the way over to the right-hand column, it says fiscal year 2007, fiscal year 2008, it gives the amount of $39,866,424. And then what follows is what we, is less anticipated revenues and reimbursements, and there's a number of those, and we're not going to read all those. But if you go to the very bottom right-hand side, it says, "Which leaves a sum to be raised by taxation of $26,969,360." This is for informational purposes. The next page is also for informational purposes, which shows the tax rate over the last two fiscal years and the, what the projected tax rate would be this year. We go to Page 1, which is the next page. This is also was for informational purposes. On this page, it gives you the total amount that has to be raised this year, grand total of school and municipal debts, and it breaks it down into education, general government grants, and it comes up with the $39,866,424. Okay? Okay, now we're going to proceed to Page 2, and we're going to start voting.
Mr. Moderator, the Budget Committee would recommend $24,481,169 for the school operations.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Moderator, the Budget Committee would recommend $113,218 for nonrecurring expenses for these schools.
Second.
That you will find in the bottom right-hand corner of the docket. This is for the nine recurring expenses for the school department. Is there any discussion?
Just clarification, Laura Epke-Nekrode, down at the bottom, second from the end, Ford 250, Ford by four. Is that the first of five years or the second?
Thank you, Laura. There will be a couple of errors on this docket that relate to the description and of what the items are. This is the second year payment. It is not the first year payment. That was an oversight on my part. And you'll, if you could point them out to me as we go through, Laura, because I know you have the list of them.[1626.13][1626.13](laughing).
So what we're voting on is the nonrecurring school expenses of $113,218. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carroll.
Mr. Moderator, the Budget Committee would recommend $376,667 for the municipal nonrecurring expenses.
Second.
Okay, you will find that figure at the very bottom of your right-hand corner, which is a total of all the nonrecurring municipal expenses, $376,667. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Next page, we'll be going to Page 4, General Government.
Mr. Moderator, the Budget Committee recommends $2254,257 for debt service.
Okay, does everybody find that? That's in your outside column where there's a total and there's above the double lines. $2254,257 for debt service. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, the Budget Committee would recommend $240,301 for the operations of the town clerk's office.
Second.
Does everyone see that? $240,301. Is there any discussion, town clerk's office? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Mr. Moderator, the Budget Committee would recommend $61,300 for the town council.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Town council expenditures?
What's the contingency fund?
Contingency fund pays for a number of expenditures that would come through the municipality that would be unknown at the time that the budget's prepared. There are, in a town of this size, $30,000 really is not a lot of money for contingency purposes. I would defer to the council so that they could explain what some of them have been, but they're basically very legitimate expenses.
I'm sorry, Chris.
Your contingency items.
Oh, yes. The contingency items, we've actually, the Budget Committee really gave us a cut, but we have used that on a variety of matters, of things that had not been budgeted or thought about, and it's really, it is really critical for the overall operations of the, of the government because... And, um, uh, it's really, uh, it is really critical for the overall operations of the, um, uh, of the government because things do crop up. Despite all the planning of the Budget Committee, we have repairs that may occur that can't be covered by, uh, the operating budgets. We have, uh, the impact fees, uh, the study done by Mr. Shumun. Uh, that was covered by the, uh, contingency account. Yep, and we've also had, uh, a number of shortfalls in the advertising budget that has not been covered by the town clerk's budget. And it's, uh, I could go on, I don't have the entire list, but, uh.
There are, there are litany of public hearings that you have that require divertments. There are a number of things that happen throughout the town that we just can't foresee. Last year, we actually spent more than, um, not this year, last year we spent more than thirty-five, I think we spent forty last year.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Mr. Moderator, the Budget Committee recommends one hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars for the town administrators.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of one hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars for the town administrator's budget say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The Budget Committee recommends fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars for the board of canvassers.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends thirty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars for the town hall operations.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends one hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars for legal services.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Budget Committee recommends twenty-three thousand, seven hundred sixteen dollars for the municipal court operations.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for the probate court operations.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends one hundred thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars for the building and zoning inspector salary and operations.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no dis- yes. Would you kindly get up and go to the microphone, please, so we could hear you?
You have longevity on the budget in a number of places, I just want to know what that means.
I couldn't quite hear your question.
Longevity, what is longevity?
Longevity is for unionized employees who have, uh, been with the municipality for a number of time, a number of years. It could be five years, ten years, fifteen years, and they get a percentage increase on their salary based on their, what is called longevity that they've spent with the time, uh, time with the town. And it's a contractual obligation.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The Budget Committee recommends sixty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars for our town planner.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Budget Committee. Budget Committee recommends forty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars for the planning board, uh, operations.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
Budget Committee recommends six thousand dollars for the zoning board of review.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends fifteen hundred dollars for the town sergeant.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends five thousand dollars for the town financial meeting.
Second.
Yes, sir. Would you come down, please, to the microphone?
Am I to understand correctly that it costs five thousand dollars for us to sit here all night?
I, I'll defer to the town clerk, but there are a lot of expenses that go along with this particular meeting. But she, she can give us a list of what they are.
Five thousand dollars would probably pay for a lot of people's weddings in this room. It just seems like a lot of money for one night.
It, it is a lot of money.
There's five thousand dollars we could all save.
We, we don't, we don't get this, we don't get this on television for free. We don't pay for the li- lawyers for free, we don't pay for the moderator for free. We actually have to construct this, this, this here. We have the police and fire who are here as well. So there are a lot of expenses that go along with this, as far as printing the dockets that you all looking at. I mean, there are a number of expenses that I'm sure the clerk could delineate even more than what I've already outlined.
Advertising is a key one. Advertising.
All right, just, just to advertise this meeting alone, the journal's probably seven hundred bucks. Correct. And it's very expensive to operate. Yes, sir. Please come to the mic. Okay.
Is there any, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The Budget Committee recommends one hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars for the tax assessors' salaries and operations.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion, tax assessors' budget? Halfway down on the right-hand side. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The Budget Committee recommends one hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars for the treasurer's office and operations.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next page, page nine.
The Budget Committee recommends one hundred eighteen thousand, seventeen dollars for the tax collector's office.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hundred eighteen thousand, seventeen dollars, tax collector. No discuss- hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends three thousand dollars for a tax sale.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends two million, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars for our group liability and health insurances.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Would you please state your name and your address, please?
Barbara Lisbon, four four one Nana Quaket, the group insurance, health, dental. Who does that cover?
Did, did you ask who? It covers all of our employees, uh, to the extent up to their co-pays. This is a net number of what the municipality has to pay for the insurances. That we factored into what the co-pays actually are for the health plans. Uh, so this is the net number of, and it's for all of our employees. This is on the municipal side. The school budget has, within the school budget, their own health insurances within their bottom line. So, does that answer your question?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The Budget Committee recommends seventeen thousand, two hundred eighty dollars for the audit of our town accounts.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends six hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars to fund the police pensions.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Chris Neerpass, one ten Stony Hollow Road. Just a question, how much unfunded liability is there for the police retirement fund?
I'll defer to.
There's, it's between four to five million dollars. Right now, the fund is having a new actuarial study being performed to review the actuarial assumptions. We're expecting that back sometime this summer.
Okay, so this is an ongoing.
This is an, this is an ongoing issue. The town, we have just updated the trustee agreement and, and the council has a new pension plan document update in front of them. Pension board meets on a monthly basis.
Would you say the, in front of us, Quinn? The number? Two point five?
Between four to five million dollars, but we, to be fair, we, we are doing a new, uh, actuarial study right now.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends thirty thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars for the pension plan for our municipal employees.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends seventy-two thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars for the pension plans for our AFSCME employees.
Second.
That's okay.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends one hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars for the pension plan for our fire department.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The Budget Committee recommends sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars for employee special retirements.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir. Would you come forward, please?
Uh, Daniel Roacher, could I have an explanation what the special retirement is?
Uh, it, it, I can explain it better if you, um, there's another number I need to find. Under unfunded liability on the next page, you'll see on page ten. The number was twenty-five thousand dollars. Within that twenty-five thousand dollar number, there were at one time four employees, and I believe the number is now two, that retired from either our fire department or our police department who were bought out under special circumstances. Either we bought them out because of health reasons or something other than a normal retirement. And we, uh, we're obligated to pay them for a number of years. Originally, it was four individuals, it is now down to two, and eventually that number will go away.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Page ten.
The Budget Committee recommends four hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars for social security.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
The Budget Committee recommends five thousand dollars for unfunded liability.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The, on page eleven, the Budget Committee would recommend two million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred eighty-nine dollars for the fire department operations and salaries.
Second.
Does everyone see that? Now, we're now on page eleven, we're three-quarters of the way down. This is the total amount for the fire department, two million, one hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Police department, we will move to.
Page thirteen, top quarter of the page, two million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second.
Do you have that? We're now on page thirteen, a total for the police department. It's under the double line, two million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends four hundred dollars for the harbor and coastal management.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? This is the best bargain we've got here, right? Four hundred dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Budget Committee recommends seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars for the harbor masters' operations.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for streetlights.
Second.
Mr. Hart?
Uh, Richard Hart, forty-four sixty-one Main Road. Recently, I, uh, was going between, uh, on one seventy-seven between Tiverton and Westport in the evening, and I was noticing the lights and things. The town is very interested, many people, in en- in energy conservation. We've had workshops on wind farms and so forth. I would like to suggest that the town, uh, look at the streetlights. In Westport, they seem to be positioned only at the intersections of, uh, coming into one seventy-seven. In Tiverton, part of one seventy-seven, there's streetlights at every third pole. Many of them, three or four, between intersections. For instance, down on Pond Bridge Road, there must be six or eight streetlights between the main road and the top of the hill. I would think that maybe the town could look at the positioning of the streetlights and possibly in the next six months eliminate almost half of this hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Dick, I.
It would be both environmentally good.
Dick, can, I, I understand exactly where you're going, and quite frankly, I, I agree with part and possible what you had to say. One of the biggest problems we have with the street lighting issue is there's our contract with whoever National Grid is now, what used to be Near Against Electric. It'll cost us more to turn the damn things off than it does to keep them on.
So we.
And, and I understand where you're going. I think that you're right, that maybe the council and maybe should formulate a committee to look at where we are, what we actually do need. But as far as what we have in the budget tonight, I think it's something we should look at for next year's budget, not this year's budget.
This is for next year's budget, what I'm suggesting. Over the next six months, do a study and have these turned off so next year we don't have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar cost for streetlights, possibly it would cut it in half.
Thanks, Greg, I do.
Well, only Mr. Hart, uh, you should be aware that, uh, Mr. Ramitowski, actually, is this the time, Mr. Ramitowski here? Has suggested to the council several months ago with regard to the, um, street lighting generally. And we have asked our town planner to take a look at our entire streetlight issue. Both for intensity and, um, uh, not specifically for this item, but the ultimate cost of energy is something that we're very conscious of. And, um, we will be working with our town planner to take a look at how we light, what we require, et cetera. And we're going to dim your lights down there by Pond Bridge Road.
So long as it, so long as it doesn't cost us money to do it.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The Budget Committee recommends fifteen hundred dollars for hydrant services.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The Budget Committee recommends four hundred five thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars for the library services.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The Budget Committee recommends twelve hundred dollars for our Eastern Rhode Island Cooperative Extension Association.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion's carries.
Unless you have any preference, Mr. Moderator, I would move five thousand, eleven thousand, eight thousand, eleven thousand, or one thousand to finish this page.
Okay. Does anybody have any objection?
Second.
Or any discussion on the remaining items, the Newport County Mental Health, visiting nurses, Little Compton Nursing Association, New Visions, Newport County Women's Resources? If not, uh, the motion will be for all of those items, the five thousand, eleven thousand, eight thousand, eleven thousand, and one thousand. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Motion's carried.
Mr. Moderator, on page sixteen at the bottom, there's two-million-one-hundred-sixty-five-thousand-two-hundred-thirty-five dollars that the Budget Committee is recommending for the Public Works Operations.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Public Works, bottom of page sixteen. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The Budget Committee recommends twenty-thousand dollars for all the associated activities delineated on the top of page seventeen.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends ninety-nine-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-three dollars for the senior center services.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Budget Committee recommends one-hundred-seventeen-thousand-seven-hundred-forty-one dollars for our Parks and Recreation.
Second.
That's at the bottom of page eighteen, total Grand Parks, grand total, Parks and Recreation. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for your assistance. Don't leave right now, there's gonna be a tax vote, but personally, I'd like to thank you for your cooperation that you've extended to me and my years as moderator. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, could you please just, just hold on one more moment? We have to take a vote on the tax resolution. Resolve that the electors of the town of Tiverton qualify to vote upon any proposition to impose a tax or for the expenditure of monies in the town meeting legally assembled on the sixteenth day of May two thousand and seven. Hereby order the assessment and collection of a tax on the ratable real estate and tangible personal property, and an excise tax on all registered motor vehicles and trailers for the privilege of such registrations in a sum not less than twenty-eight-million-two-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirteen, or more than twenty-eight-million-two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirteen. Said tax is for ordinary expenses and charges for the town's proportion of the state tax and for other purposes authorized by law. The assessor, having in accordance with the provisions of Title forty-four, Chapter five, General Laws nineteen fifty-six, as amended, assessed, and apportioned, said real and personal property tax on the thirty-first day of December two thousand and six at twelve o'clock midnight, and said excise tax shall be apportioned on a prorata basis during the calendar year of proration, based on the ratio that the number of days such vehicle or trailer is registered is to the number of days in the calendar year of proration, according to law, shall upon completion of said assessment, date, certify, and sign the same and deliver to and deposit with the town clerk's office on or before the fifteenth day of June two thousand and seven. The town clerk, upon receipt of said assessment, shall forthwith make a copy of the same and deliver it to the town treasurer, who shall forthwith issue and affix to said copy a warrant under his hand directed to the collector of taxes of said town, commanding said tax collector to proceed to collect said taxes of the persons and estates liable therefore. Said tax, when paid in one annual installment, shall be due and payable on the first day of August two thousand and seven. Taxpayers may elect to make payments quarterly for real estate and personal property tax when over one-hundred dollars, in which case, payment shall be due on the first day of July and October of two thousand and seven, and the first day of January and April two thousand and eight. Payments not received by the tenth of the month in which due shall be assessed interest at the rate of twelve percent per annum from July first to the date of payment on the unpaid quarterly balance, adopted at the Financial Town Meeting of May sixteenth two thousand and seven, given under my hand and seal of the office the sixteenth day of May. This includes the motor vehicle levy of one-million-one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-two, and the inventory levy of thirty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. This meeting is adjourned.